Tuesday, May 24th, and as Acting Chair, I would like to bring the meeting to order. It is being recorded on Zoom as well as by Gail Hunter. And first item is, I would like to take a moment of silence for the victims of the Texas shooting today. Thank you. And on a much different note, I would like to welcome Brian Solace and Kathy Bulata to the Dream Team, the Select Board. And hopefully, we can remove, move right along. And if I'm forgetting anything, feel free to chime in. I have disabled the chat for now, just so that while we're discussing, we can do so after the board has said what it needs to say, and then we can invite public comment. Do I need to take a roll call, Greg, or a motion to open the meeting?
No, it's not necessary. You can, you can just open the meeting. You declared it open.
Okay, thank you. All right. Well, first on the agenda tonight, now that we've said hi to our two new members, is to review the approved, to review the town, the warrant for the special town meeting. Greg, do you want to do this?
Sure, I can walk you, walk you through it. The, obviously, the bulk of the items are related to proposed zoning changes that the Planning Board has reviewed and voted out. And so there are 11 articles related to that. But before we get to those 11, I think it'd be appropriate to focus first on two potential articles that have been suggested for, in addition to the zoning, one is
I'm very sorry, I'm going to stop you. And I think Sheila is waiting to be heard because I neglected the part where public comment is invited on items not on the agenda.
Yes, okay.
Sorry about that.
No.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Becky. I just I have a quick question for the town administrator. I'm wondering the formerly defunct 40R, our new neighborhood pro some 300 market rate units to be built in the LCD. Why has that program been the planning?
You're going in and out. You're, you're very, it's, we're not getting everything you're saying.
Sorry. So I'm asking why the 40R MAPC New Neighborhood Program has been re-resurrected and is being promoted at the, at the Planning Board as an addition to the LCD, as an overlay district in the LCD.
So I wasn't under the understanding that they were promoting the 40R, but they were still looking at a mixed use potential in that area. And that was something that the Planning Board wanted to finish up. But I would have to ask the Planning Board directly.
Are you referring to last night's meeting, Sheila?
I haven't been able to get the video. I'd like I haven't been able to get the video, but no, it's been Chris may, Chris only may know because he, I think he's part of the
Okay, well, that's, that's not what we're, we're not here to have the Planning Board weigh in.
I answer the question, why is basically 40R before the Planning Board again?
My understanding that it is not, and if that's a misnomer, then we can correct that. But they are looking, my understanding is they are continuing to look at a mixed use, but not under 40R.
And out of curiosity, Sheila, where is this information coming from?
Well, you, you can, you can find it in the
I'm just curious, the source, social media perhaps, or is it from the Planning Board?
Is the town planner is, is wanting?
Okay, I'm going to stop this now.
And I'm asking why, you know, the town, it's been very clear that they want commercial development in the LCD.
Sheila, this is not the forum. There we go. Sheila, I'm sorry, this is not the forum for that. Would you send an email, please, to the town planner, the Chair of the Planning Board, and Greg, and ask that to be clarified? I've not heard anything about that. Greg says he's not. And this is not the forum for a Planning Board discussion. Okay? And did you have, did you have another question? Okay. All right. You are muted. Let's see. Did you mute yourself?
Well, Zoom just informed me that I could, you could
Sheila, I've got things to move on to now, so we're not going to discuss that at this point. Okay? All right, sorry. All right, Greg, back to you. Take it away.
Sure. So we have the draft warrant included in your package. It also was posted online as part of tonight's calendar listing. And so in the draft, there are 13 articles. 11 of them are devoted to various amendments proposed for the zoning regulations, which the Planning Board is advancing. They approved all of them last night in final form. And, and the articles then are as presented in the draft. There are two articles, as I was indicating, articles one and two, not related to zoning. The first one is related to a potential land taking. This is what I'm dubbing a friendly, friendly eminent domain taking. So it would seek voter authorization to allow you to go through the taking process with the landowners. And the purpose for acquiring the land would be to support affordable housing. The Affordable Housing Trust voted unanimously in favor of pursuing this. The Planning Board at their meeting last night voted to endorse the acquisition of the land as part of our efforts to expand affordable housing in town. And, and therefore, we have the question to the voters, giving you permission to continue to pursue it. There was some language added from the previous version of this article that would also allow some funding to be added to this if the, if the owners decide that they're not able to make a donation as part of the taking, that they want some compensation, then we would have that, that additional option. We'll know more about that in the next week or so. But certainly, the Affordable Housing Trust has funds that could be tapped to to make payment if that becomes necessary. So that's Article One. Article Two is potential article regarding funding, supplemental funding, supplemental budget request for the FY '23 budget that was approved a few weeks ago at the annual town meeting. And now that the voters have, majority of voters have weighed in preferring to keep our dispatch operations in-house, then it's been suggested that we might want to pursue some additional funding immediately to go forward with some upgrading of our in-house operations. Specifically, I think it might make sense if it's a first step to to acquire funds for the software that we use for dispatch, for dispatching, the computer aided dispatching, the CAD system. We have a fairly antiquated software system that we continue to use. I mean, there may, the additional needs, upgrading, get a second internet line in so that there's some redundancy in case the, the main line goes down. You want to make sure that that is fully functioning with the second internet line, and there may be some additional equipment needs that we could do. I certainly appreciate the desire to sort of move full steam ahead with, with these. I think there may be some concerns about adding too much to the, to the agenda for the town meeting, particularly with COVID on the rise again. I think there'll be a desire to keep the meeting as short as possible. And this does have the potential of becoming a bit of a debate in terms of what's needed and when and how soon. But that's something that we can, we can kick around as a group right now to, to see what your feelings are about that.
Anne, did you want to ask about that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I suggest that we put an article on the warrant that, for this, if we decide later that we don't want to do that, we can pass over it at the meeting. And I also suggest that we don't put a dollar amount in immediately, because I think we don't know what we need, actually need to spend yet. And that's a subject for more discussion, which we could take up at our June 6th meeting. And those are my initial comments.
Alan? Does that sound reasonable?
I don't think it does. I'm fully aware, obviously, that it's the Select Board's decision as to what to put on the warrant. But I have very serious concerns about adding anything of significance to a warrant that is already going to be very time consuming to discuss with COVID on the rise, as Greg said. I don't know how familiar you all are with the numbers, but as of May 19th, the CDC reported that Essex County experienced in the prior week, a 12% increase in infections. That was on top of a 26% increase in the prior week. Essex County is now, if you look at their color coded map, the highest risk county in Massachusetts. It's bright orange. Locally, our own Board of Health reports that as of May 19th, there were 10 active cases in town, double the number of the week before. And that's likely under reporting because of the prevalence of home testing. The trend seems to suggest that the numbers will only get worse in the weeks between now and June 11th. And I'm very concerned about the length of the meeting. We have 11 zoning articles. If you look at the warrant, they only take up five pages. But if you look at what the detailed amendments are, it's more than 80 pages. And I've already received emails from residents and other board members, not planning board members, asking about amendments from the floor and how to do that. I think this discussion, I mean, in 27 years, I've never seen 80 pages of, of text for us to act on at a single meeting. I think that could take three to four hours by itself with potentially, potentially longer discussion based on floor amendments.
Okay, so, so it's, it's nothing pertaining to the article or how it might be presented. It's simply a matter of adding one more thing.
Right. And we know dispatch is going to be controversial. I would be amazed if we could, if we could take up even the simplest article related to dispatch without an hour's worth of discussion. And that's, that's on top of what I'm guessing might be three to four hours on the zoning amendment. The risk of, the risk of transmission goes up, especially in an indoor space, directly in proportion to the length of time people are there.
Absolutely.
And I'm, I understand from Greg that there is no urgency, there is no crisis with respect to the current software and dispatch. We're not gonna, we're not gonna have a collapse of our dispatch system if we don't get something else in place in the next few months. So I would strongly encourage the board to put this off until the fall.
Okay. Well, and one of my concerns was just providing time for the FinCom to weigh in as well. But I'm going to take some other members. Thank you very much, Alan. That's definitely to be taken into consideration.
Becky, excuse me, I, I appreciate the, the opportunity to comment on, on a subject that is really outside my lane.
Well, I think you have a lot more experience doing this by yourself than probably the rest of us combined. So good advice. All right. I'm sure we'll come back to you, Alan. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to quickly address Amelia Burkhart. And I just wanted to let you know that after the board has had its discussion, we'll come back to you and then we'll entertain public comment, just to let you know. John Round?
Yes, thank you, Becky. I certainly agree with Alan, and I think also to the point, the board also has to decide about what the disposition of the dispatch is going to be in light of what, what happened last Tuesday. And that discussion has to happen, has to be put on one of our agendas here. And so we've got to line things up and not be too presumptive in how things are going to fit together. But I do agree in doing the homework and looking at all of these articles, it's not going to be an easy agenda. So I mean, that's, that's my observation on, with, with regard to dispatch. I also have some questions about, about the land transfer, which, which Greg had mentioned. And I was just curious, Greg, how is, how is all of this going to affect the RFP that the, that the Affordable Housing Trust and the Housing Authority has put together? Are they rethinking that or kind of deciding, well, let's see what happens here?
Well, so you don't know. Yeah. So if the, if the vote was positive to go forward with acquiring the property, then, then they would work with who, you know, whatever developer they should, you know, that's chosen through the RFP process. They would add this to the mix and it would offer some additional flexibility to what might happen out at that loading place for road. So as you know, there's the two, two duplexes there now that the Housing Authority owns and operates. There's been thoughts about upgrading those units and potentially adding another duplex or so. And this, this additional land, even though it may not be built upon, it would give some ability, give some flexibility, either as open space for additional properties and you could cluster the units where the existing ones are, something along those lines.
Okay. I mean, I think it would affect it. I, I don't know what the, how buildable that land is, but seems to me it would be a factor. When you say, when you say available funds, how much available funds are there? Because I know that our capital reserves there are, we're getting down close to where we want to be.
Right. So the capital, the, the fund balance itself is, is close to that 10% target number now. It has been dropped down over the last few years. The Affordable Housing Trust, they have their own funds. They've been getting community preservation funds every year for the last few years. And I don't have the balance off the top of my head. I think I might have seen John on the, on the list here, John Forback. But I think it's in the 500,000 to 700,000 range that they have in their account.
Okay, all right. And for our available funds, well, it's whatever we can think makes sense, I assume. But I know that the, the margin relative to the 10% is pretty tight now, as you had indicated. Spent it all down on pipes, I think.
Right. So this, this particular parcel is, is that appraised at a very high, I should say, it's not assessed at a very high level. It's right around $10,000 as an assessed for taxation purposes. It, it being a landlocked parcel, it, you know, it can't be independently developed. So it's not having a high value.
All right. So the money's involved would not be great, it sounds like. All right. So that's, that's fine. I, that's, that's helpful. And I assume that the Affordable Housing Trust, they, their monies, they control that money in terms of what they, they want to do.
Yes, they do. They would want to work in partnership with you.
Sure.
On acquiring this, because you have the, the authority for the eminent domain, whereas they do not.
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, John?
That's it for now.
Okay. Kathy?
Hi, yes, I, I agree with John on Article Two. I think it's much too early to have a warrant article discussing dispatch. And the way I see the next steps unfolding are, you know, number one, let's have an open discussion about what the vote means. And then number two, even before FinCom takes a look at whatever we decide, we, in all of the public forums, we really have not discussed implementation planning. Okay? And that's because we don't know, you know, hadn't decided which way we were going. But implementation planning, you know, what's the timeline of whatever it is you're going to do? And the sequence of events that can greatly affect how you spend and when you spend it, especially when you're talking about technology heavy projects. Okay? I've done hundreds of these things and to, to appropriate money before having a discussion on the steps of implementation, what they mean, the sequence, I, I think that's very premature. So I would, I would ask us to, to kind of talk through not only the decision, but the implementation plan before we consider asking the town for any type of, of funding. And, and so I agree, the fall meeting would, would be a better choice.
Hey, anything else right now? Okay, John and Kathy, if I could ask you to put your hands down, please. Thank you. All right. Anne?
I, I certainly appreciate Alan's input. I thought we had chosen that date because it was available to have an outdoor meeting. And if we continue to have bad news from the, from the Board of Health, I hope we will consider having an outdoor meeting. But at the same, and I also recognize that this is a new Select Board. And that the priorities of the old Select Board may not carry over, but the old Select Board did determine that what we currently have for dispatch is, does not meet the safety requirements of the fire department and the emergency, emergency medical crew. And I think it's unwise to continue with, with a system that the fire chief feels is unsafe, particularly since we have voted that we agree with, with, the previous board had voted that we agree that what we currently have is not adequate. And that's it.
Thank you. Sarah Melish?
Am I unmuted?
You're unmuted.
Okay. So I was speaking with respect to the Halloran property and the Affordable Housing Trust assets. We have approximately close to 800,000 assets, and another 200,000 coming from the CPC in the next fiscal year. So we have more than adequate funds to cover the 10,000 odd possibility if there's somebody who comes forward in the next three and a half years that declares they have a right to the property. Thanks.
Wonderful. Thank you. Martin, before I come to you, did you, did you want to talk about the dispatch article, Martin?
Yes, specifically about the dispatch article, Article Two.
Yes. And just to be clear, Martin is our Board of Health physician.
You want me to talk now?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, Martin Han, I'm here individually, but I'm not representing the opinion of the entire Board of Health.
Then I'm going to stop you. If you're not, just, just if you're talking as an individual, we'll come back to you later. But if you're talking, okay?
Yeah. No, this is not officially from the Board of Health.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead and keep your hand up and we'll circle back. Board member Brian Solace, please.
Yeah, hi. I just want to echo and I concur with both Kathy and John as far as putting the cart before the horse. And I guess the question is, how do we get the discussion onto the, the next agenda? That's all. So we can have this discussion and we start, we start moving in a direction.
They're, they're actually, yes, and you would, as Anne did say, and neither you nor Kathy would nor know this at this point, unless you'd been on, in on some of the meetings and, or a lot of them anyway. So there has been discussion, but given a new board, we will start again. So yes, it is something we need to discuss to include FinCom, to include both chiefs. And anyway, so we can get it on an agenda.
Okay, I just think that we've been kicking this down the road so long. It's just time to put some answers to it. All right, thank you.
Go ahead and put your hand down, please. Then Greg, should we have the chief's way in regarding this at all or not at this point?
Well, you certainly can. I mean, obviously, you know, current dispatch operations have been functioning for, for a long time. If the vote had gone the other way and we were going to to the regional center, or even if that's still your decision, that's nine to, nine to 12 months away. And so we would be continuing with our existing system unimproved if we were to go that way. So from that perspective, I agree with Alan, that I was feeling that there's not a immediate immediacy to, to make improvements, you know, tomorrow. We'll, we'll, we'll get by. I think as, as this board in the past has certainly discussed, and I, and I agree, and the chiefs both agree that we do need to make improvements and we should get right on to, to mapping out what those improvements should be, when and how much they're going to cost. We have a good sense of that. But I, I, I am comfortable waiting until, until the fall.
Okay. And yes, we actually have some good numbers before us, or starting numbers in terms of what would be needed. And I, I too am very concerned about this large jump in COVID. But I would like to hear from Chief Clary regarding his perspective on dispatch at this time.
I'll be very brief because in all honesty, I am at a loss for words. I, I am amazed at the 15 years of dispatch discussion prior to me getting here. I am amazed at the amount of time and effort we have spent in the past two years. The amount of time we've spent since the, the winter, when the board was looking to vote to make a decision. Two more public forums, now a public vote. Two more public forums, now a public vote, new board members, and we're resetting the clock again. And I understand, I disagree that we're in a crisis and I just really hope nothing serious happens because of the deficiencies we have identified to this point until decisions are made and things are put in motion. We're talking lives and safety. And to see topics such as this get continually pushed away for paperwork items that take a higher priority is very distressing and disappointing to me. And I'm trying to do the best I can to protect our people and the citizens. And I just want to make that known that we have a limit in what we can do until decisions are made above us to change the systems and the failings that we have identified directly affect people's lives. Thank you.
Chief, may I ask if, are you saying that you feel this should be an agenda item at this meeting?
Not with the current. I I I agree with Alan, the amount of discussion that will be on those other items would would get this either lost or not given the attention. I'm just disappointed that this is still not being given the attention that it needs.
Right.
So dispatch, police and firefighters' lives, elements I brought up about sprinkler systems to protect homeowners, still hasn't been discussed two years after being suggested. And I'm not sure what my role is supposed to be anymore, other than waving red flags and doing the best I can professionally to work within systems that are not ideal. And although we've existed in these systems without a tragedy, as we see in Texas today, kids went to that school for many, many years without a tragedy and only took one time. And that's my concern about public safety officers, both fire and police in the current dispatch system. Whether we're at the regional or here, it's all about safety. And for safety to be continually put on a back burner and almost appears to be ignored or like this can just continue for how long we ever wanted to go. And and I find that horribly unacceptable.
Yeah, I'm gonna push back a little bit, Chief. This this has been on the front burner for the last 18 months. And if the vote had gone the other way, we would be gearing up now to go to regional, which would take nine to 12 months. So I don't think we're losing time, and I think this will continue to be on a front burner, and we will get there in short order.
Okay. Any other comments on dispatch, the dispatch article? Chief Fitzgerald?
Yes, thank you, Becky. I just want to say that I would, you know, since we've been through the public forums and been through the most recent vote that the 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 board take this up sooner rather than later. So both Chief Clary and I and Greg and along with the board can can plan ahead so we can get this, the funding and the necessary items on the agenda for the fall town town meeting. So I, it's gonna take a little bit of time, but I just think we need a decision sooner rather than later. So maybe at your next meeting, that that topic could be discussed on which way that we're gonna go with dispatch.
Thank you. Alan, you had your hand up. Todd, would you put yours down, please? The hand down?
I I had it up, but I took it down. Thank you. Nope.
Okay.
Not for now, anyway.
Okay, thank you. I suppose, should we take a vote as to whether to keep that article in on the town warrant or remove it?
Yeah, you had a couple of hands up from the public, I think, that wanted to.
Oh, they're for something, those are for something else. But yes, you're right, I need to go back to Martin before we do that. But Anne, you?
Uh, I was just going to point out that Martin had asked to speak.
Thank you. Martin?
Thank you very much. Hello, everybody. Martin Han, I'm I'm here in capacity as a physician and member of the Board of Health, but not representing an official opinion of the Board of Health because we haven't talked about it as a board. But I do believe that adding this very important dispatch article to the town meeting for June would explode the meeting. Just hearing how contentious this issue is and and the funding for it is going to be difficult to discuss, that would add probably an hour or so to the meeting that is already very long with all the zoning board articles. And given the current COVID situation, which we have been monitoring very closely, we're actually quite concerned. Hospitalizations are creeping up, case numbers are creeping up. We aren't making a lot of headway with regard to boosting. We still have plenty of vulnerable people in the population, even though if you're vaccinated with two shots, you still can get COVID and spread it to other vulnerable people, as you know. So the longer the meeting takes, the more likely we got get into a situation where it could develop into a spreader event. So I concur with Alan that we should move that article out of the meeting, or if it's really urgent to discuss, move other things out of the agenda if possible, and keep the town meeting as short as possible. I I do understand that the dispatch issue is important and needs to be addressed, but probably separately. That's all I wanted to say to this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Martin. Okay, it it seems fairly clear that consensus is we should not include this article. Does anybody from the board feel otherwise?
I would like to have a vote. I move that we include this article.
Okay, we have the motion. Is there a second? Okay, I'm not hearing a second, so we will not have this article.
Is the hand up with the, oh, it says Amelia Burkhart, it doesn't look like Amelia.
No, that's pertaining to the Article One.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, all right, so there you go. Martin, did you have something else to say? Okay, go ahead and put your hand in there. Thank you. All right, and I'm just going to let Amelia Burkhart make a quick comment so we can move along.
My comment is relation to Article One, if I may, and it is my wife.
I need your name and your address, please.
Of course, I am not Amelia Burkhart, that is my wife, it's her Zoom account. My name is Mark Iros, I live at 10 Loading Place Road.
Thank you.
And if I may, perhaps the simplest way to do this is is Greg, I wrote you a an email letter on Saturday after I read you.
You have any, any comments are supposed to go through the chair, and that's just to keep from dialogue between other people. So if you would direct them to the chair, that's the way it's supposed to go.
Understood. I seek the chair's permission to actually read this this letter I wrote to Greg. I I'm a fairly quick speaker. I think I could get through it in under two minutes. I could read faster, 90 seconds.
Go ahead, go for it.
Great. Hi, Greg, I hope all is well. While I'm not the most studious observer of town government, I do pay attention to try and stay current. I read the cricket every week, especially and always your updates. I was surprised by the headline in the property map on the front of this week's edition, friendly land taking to be considered at MBTS June special town meeting. As a citizen and a closer butter to the affordable property housing on Loading Place Road, I do follow and appreciate the need and complexity of the matter of affordable housing for the town. I appreciate the intricacies of the various proposals, the weight of the School Street 40B project, and the hours and efforts applied to these matters. Our Loading Place Road community also engages as appropriate. My question to Greg was, are the next upcoming relevant forums to attend in which the matter will be discussed, I asked about last night's planning meeting, which I attended, and this very forum. It seems to me the concept arose suddenly compared to the normal pace of such town matters. In reviewing the likely committee committees and their meeting minutes, it appears these are the forums which the matter was brought forth. And I list through them, the last couple of meetings, in a matter of brevity, I will go past, but I will note several of them say to discuss strategy with respect to litigation in an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body. Point that some of these meetings were relatively quiet. While I can appreciate the need for discretion while discussing matters and negotiations, especially in the early phases, this one seems to have gone from small private discussion to town meeting very quickly.
Are you? Is it almost, I'm just, first of all, I would like to say that that the tone is less than than one that is, you know, asking for commentary in a civil way. So I just, and and it's it'd be nice if we could all just try to have a nice tone with each other.
I am so sorry. It was only in my attempt to read quickly and and enunciate, I did not, I did not mean to project anything in the tone. All I, all I really was asking was the appropriate forum and how it it got to the town meeting warrants so quickly. I do, I my my sincere apologies, Mike, I did not.
I understand, I do the same thing. I get it.
I'm sorry, my fault. And I think you get the gist of, I I I'm I'm done with my comments, thank you. And I do, I really do apologize. I did not mean to convey anything but a sincere inquiry to the board's.
Thank you. Greg?
So in terms of 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 the timing question, so the the discussions with the property owners have been going on for a few years, and they've been very quiet. He's, Mr. Burkhart's correct, or Mr. Iros, I'm sorry, is correct. And those discussions tend to need to be quiet because if if real estate transactions are 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 out in the public early, then we easily miss out on opportunities. So the nature of of real estate lends itself to to less, I guess I use the word transparency because of the sensitive nature of them. So when the time is 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 right to bring it forward to the public, we 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 do that with full disclosure, we try to. There's no attempt to try to push this one through without ability to debate it. Ultimately, the the voters have that say, and they have that say ultimately at the town meeting, because any any acquisition of land has to be approved by the voters. So there's there's always that that check, if you will.
Okay, and I'm I'm going to jump in here because we have just a few more articles to get through. And at this, at this pace, we're we're going to be here for some time. So Mr. Iros, was Greg able to answer your question?
Yes, I I believe so. I understand that I I cut off my last paragraph. I do understand and appreciate the town meeting is the forum. Those of us that are close by, this came very suddenly to us, you know, to see it on the cricket Saturday, and then two weeks later on the meeting, it just seemed very, very sudden, and we were taken aback.
Well, I would.
I appreciate that, yeah, I appreciate that. I I understand and we'll we'll try to make sure everyone has information in preparation for town.
Thank you very much.
Is that all, Mr. Iros?
Yes, I am also, thank you.
Okay. You would put your hand down, that's good. Thank you. Mary Foley, and I am just going to try to move things along a little more quickly here so that we're not here till midnight. Where's Mary?
Mary Foley, 1 Pulaski Drive. I am on the planning board. I am not speaking for the planning board. But after hearing that, those last comments from that gentleman, I do want to make a comment that the planning board was presented a report, I'm not sure who was it was written by, and and asked to vote on this land purchase or pass over. And unfortunately, I don't believe we had all of the information. We were not aware that a resident had sent an email with some concerns or that there were other residents with concerns. And so I am concerned about the full disclosure.
Um, he did say that last night at the meeting, Mary.
That was after the vote, Becky. So prior to our vote, we did not have the full information, so I'm voicing my concern on that. Thank you.
Okay. Sarah Melish? You're muted, Sarah? There you go.
Oh, yeah, okay. Um, so I'm Chair of the Finance Committee, and I want to let people know that we, the Finance Committee will be meeting on Thursday to discuss this issue. So if any members of public wish to comment, you'll take their time to that point in time. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, so, Article Number Three.
So I, again, all of these are, the the remaining articles are all from the planning board. And they've been having extensive public meetings for a few years now. On these articles, they had their final forum last week, public official public hearings on it last week, and they made their recommendation final votes last night. So I I was not intending to go into a lot of detail on these at this time. They they speak for themselves, but I can certainly give an overview. So Article Three is is taking a look at Sections One, Two, Three, and Four, and it's basically, for the most part, it's it's a reformatting and clearing up of language. There are significant number of new definitions being added. And in Section Four, the big change is instead of a narrative that that takes many pages to to describe the different uses in the different districts, there's a new use table that summarizes in in easy to read form what can be done in what district. The other change here is that swimming pools would would become a by right use instead of needing a special permit if the proposed swimming pool met all the various requisite dimensional requirements, et cetera, that the building inspector would would ensure that it that it does before he issues a building permit. So that's a quick, quick summary of of Article Three. It is a reformatting and adding new definitions, the amending Sections One, Two, Three, and Four of the zoning bylaw. If you want me to keep going, I'll keep moving.
Yeah, why don't we go, and if any of the board members have a question, they can put their hand up and we can go from there. Or if Alan does. John Round?
Thank you, Becky. So I I was, I was just going through the the matrix that's been put together. Things are tabulated now, and it's certainly easier to read. I think some of the board members have got a couple of emails from various folks concerned about just what by right means. And I'm assuming that in this table where we've got a lot, all these whys mean by right. And I would, can I assume that the majority of those whys are by rights that have always been there?
That's correct.
It's just that they've been rearranged. And there are people that probably aren't under that assumption. They say, oh, all of these whys, now everybody can do anything without asking any questions.
So in total, if you look at all of the amendments, you know, all 11 amendments, there are basically three, three new by right uses proposed.
Okay, if if they, if if they were shown somehow in the in this table and say, hey, this is all that's changed from a by right perspective, I think that would be clearer.
Okay, well, we can do that. So so those, the three basic ones are the swimming pool that I just mentioned.
Right.
For people who have non-conforming lots, that is lots that are smaller than what the underlying zoning currently calls for. If an addition is proposed that fits within the dimensional requirements of the current zoning, then they could proceed by right, meaning they just need to go to the building inspector and apply for a permit, and he decides whether or not it meets other requirements. That's the way it is for anybody who has a conforming lot, and it would give that same option to non-conforming lots, only if the proposed addition stays within the proper setbacks and dimensional requirements. In other words, it doesn't exacerbate the non-conformity of the property. So that's the second. So that's the second area where it's being proposed that new by right uses are added. And then the third one is small accessory dwelling units. Those units that are under 900 square feet currently, all accessory dwelling units require a special permit. And if, again, the proposal that the planning board has put forth is to say if you have accessory dwelling unit proposed that 900 feet or smaller and is part of a primary dwelling, then you could proceed without a special permit. So those are the three.
Right, and I assume that if the ZBA is involved or the planning board is involved or something, abutters then are notified that there's going to be a hearing and a discussion about this, and you can come to that hearing, et cetera.
Right, so that's the big difference. So by right use, you still have to meet the requirements of the laws, but you don't have to go through a public hearing unless you're not automatically notified.
That's correct. And I see that Sarah Melish has her hand raised. And I think much of these changes were driven by what the zoning board experience has been with accessory dwelling in the past I don't know, two or three years or whatever, in terms of what needs attention and what doesn't, and this kind of addresses that. But, okay, thanks for clearing that up, Greg.
John, Sarah Malish?
Yeah, I wanted to speak to the swimming pool by right. So we've had probably 30 applications for swimming pools in the past year and a half. And they've all been approved. So my suggesting is that we, I make a motion on town meeting floor to have the swimming pools by right, but also require a statement from the abutters that they are in, they agree with the swimming pool. And if they don't agree, then it would go to a special permit. Because, you know, we've had, of all the swimming pool applications, we've had one concern of an abutter, and it was really responding to a bar and a patio, which was outside the parameters of a special permit. And but if we give the abutters an option to complain, you know, we feel it's up to the applicants to talk to the abutters. If you don't do it, go for a special permit. You know, so that's where we're coming on that. We have other concerns about the zoning amendments presented. We were involved early on, and we have not been involved recently. And I'm not sure as of today what the final recommendations are. I looked online today and they weren't there. So as a chair of the CBA, I have no clue what's being presented to the town. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And if you're all set, go ahead and put your hand down. Thank you, Sarah. Okay. Greg?
Sure. So then article four proposes to take three of the existing zoning bylaw sections and move them into the general bylaws. And so the three are regulations regarding junk cars, regulations regarding curb cuts or driveway entrances, and regulations regarding stormwater. By putting them into the general bylaws, it gives broader applicability. And it doesn't limit it just to when a new use or new building is being proposed for a building. We are able to enforce these three outside the permitting process. The junk car provisions is pretty much, not pretty much, it is the same language as currently exists. The driveway entrance or curb cut, very minor changes, but it gives it to the review process and permitting of a new driveway entrances would be done by the DPW as long as the applicant followed the prescribed requirements that are in the bylaw. If not, then it would revert back to a special permit before the planning board. Under stormwater, the stormwater management of a new project would remain with the planning board as part of their site plan review process. But stormwater management outside of permitting would be managed by the DPW. And that is to bring us more to compliance with state and federal stormwater regulations. So article four, as I say, proposes to take these three sections and move them into the general bylaw. So article five is the corollary. So assuming voters approve them, those three sections moving into the general bylaws, then article five officially deletes them from the zoning bylaw. So the article five is simply to voters approve deleting those three sections, junk cars, stormwater, and curb cuts. So then we have article six. And in article six, this is where we are amending what is currently section seven. So that section seven is deleted. And then a new section seven, which is now, I'm sorry, a new section, which is now going to be labeled section 12, will be added. And this is an administrative section. So it talks about, let's see if I'm getting this right. I'm getting a little bit ahead of myself. So in article six, we we delete section seven and renumber section seven to section 12, which will be a subject of article seven. And then in section six, this is where we clean up the non-conforming uses. So we make it cleaner whereby we take, we basically consolidate, which has been a bit of a repetitive set of performance standards and create one set of performance standards that applies to site plan reviews or special permits from the ZBA. So we establish a single set of standards for guiding developers and applicants and what the review boards, either the planning board or the ZBA are to follow. So that's article six. I'm sorry, I got a little bit of ahead of myself about section 12. So that's article six. And then in article seven, that's where we do a rewrite of the former section seven, which is now section 12, which is basically describing the process for applications, describes the role of the planning board, describes the role of the ZBA, and again, outlines the various processes for applications.
Sarah, did you have a comment on six or seven?
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure where it is. But it's my understanding they're changing the parameter. Today, if somebody is in a setback, it's a special permit. It's non-conforming, so it's a special permit to extend further into setback or extend up. It's my understanding that the new bylaw, and I think it's this section, I could be wrong, is requiring it to be a variance. And for the last five years, we've been back and forth with attorneys, which has said, no, case law says it's a special permit. So I'm vehemently against it being changed to a variance.
All right, Chris Olney is on. Chris Olney is on. So Chris, are you able to speak to this?
Hi, Becky. Sure, I can speak a little bit to it. We do know that non-conforming uses are a hot button in the town. And I think our philosophy behind this is to go in baby steps and do a little bit and see how that goes. And then we can come back in the fall or next year and do a little bit more. But I certainly understand Sarah's point. I think she's correct. But I just think we just have to go carefully with this topic.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Greg? Eight?
Yep, so article eight then. Again, it's cleaning up the old section six, replacing it with a new general regulations. Again, as I mentioned, removing some redundant sections. It creates, again, that comprehensive set of review standards and related to special permits and site plan review. So performance-based regulations for those different applications, but a standard set that applies to them all. And then there is still reference to stormwater regulations. We refer now back to the general bylaw so that when an application is before the planning board, they would use what's in the general bylaw when they do their site plan review. So there's a reference to that bylaw that has been moved. So article eight then is a focus on the rewriting of section six and cleaning it up and make it a more simple presentation without loss of its teeth, if you will. So then moving on to article nine. So this is, again, this is focused on a new section seven, which now is becoming the non-conforming use section. So that was formerly section six one, now it becomes section seven. And it revises and expands the regulations. So this would allow some more flexibility in approving modifications or reuses of properties that are currently not in compliance. So it would give the zoning board of appeals some greater discretion in allowing a non-conforming, a new non-conforming use that they deem to be less detrimental to the neighborhood. So if you have an existing non-conforming use, under, if this bylaw, this article were to pass, it would allow an applicant to apply for a new non-conforming use that the planning board, I'm sorry, that the zoning board of appeals potentially could approve if it found that the new use was less detrimental than the old use. So currently, that's not the case in our bylaws, that a non-conforming use can only be changed into a conforming use. So this is one of the more substantive changes in the bylaw, in the zoning amendments being proposed. And then we move on.
Has a comment?
Yeah, so this relates to 34 Tappan Street, which was industrial use for a moving storage place with lots of, and it was historically a storage for wheat or something. And.
It was a greenery, yeah.
Yeah, greenery, right. And the developer wanted to convert it into four condos and had parking for eight spaces. And when we talked to town council, we were advised that we did not have the right to approve a use that was non-conforming and less detrimental that we could, it could only convert to a single family residence district A. So that's, you know, I gotta believe that, you know, 20 trucks into a moving storage, if you want to do that, is better than a four-story, a four-place condo. So that was the issue.
Thank you. Okay.
So then article 10, this is adding a new section eight titled adult entertainment. So state law prohibits you from prohibiting adult entertainment townwide, but you can limit it to a certain section of town. So currently, we don't limit it to any one particular section. So it's allowed in any business section of town. So by adding this new section eight, we would limit the location for adult entertainment to the LCD. So that's article 10. In article 11, it is deleting the existing 9.2, section 9.2 in the zoning bylaws, which refers to residential conservation cluster developments. And it rewrites that residential conservation cluster set of bylaws. It removes the minimum lot size and to follow the underlying density lot size of the zone that is being proposed, rather than putting, I think it's a five acre minimum now. But if you were in a three acre zone, you could do a cluster development on three acres versus having to have five. And then it also, excuse me, it also gives specific density bonuses for affordable housing or open space or other town amenities, like a sports field or something like that. So it gives discretion through a special permitting process to create cluster developments, some more open space with those developments and potential amenities to the town, whether it be affordable housing, regular open space, or recreational space. So that's article 11, adjusting and modifying the rules for residential conservation cluster development. And then article 12, two more to go here. Article 12 is creating a new section 9.3, and this is focusing on senior housing. So currently, we do not allow senior housing anywhere in town. And so by adding this new section, it would allow by special permit the development and use of senior housing, nursing care, healthcare, housing with supportive services for senior populations. This is possible by special permit in all districts. And it would amend the table of uses by adding this potential use through a special permit to all districts. And then lastly, article 13, this is the article that modifies the accessory use section. In the version I sent to you earlier today, there was another error found in the section about deleting the current language regarding accessory uses for employees. Originally, that was recommended to be deleted. Planning board last night decided to keep that in. So number seven would not be deleted. But a new number, or modified number six would be a change to the use table in that it would be a combination, yes, for accessory uses as a by right use, but only if it's a small accessory use, and that is defined as being 900 square feet or less. Or it's a special permit if it's between 900 and 1200 square feet. 1200 square feet being the largest that is allowed as an accessory dwelling. So these would be allowed in residential districts A, B, C, E, and the general district. And it replaces some, the language of the special housing provisions currently in section 9.1. So the text, so most of the previous amendments, the full text is available online or it will be starting tomorrow and available at the clerk's office or the library. For the accessory dwelling units, the text is recommended to be put into the warrant itself. Mainly because I think the planning board anticipates this one being one of the more controversial topics because it does allow small ADUs by right and not going through the special permitting process. And this, as. as we commented earlier, this has been pushed back on the concerns, I should say, on allowing by right uses because it it does not allow the public hearing process and notification of a butters. And so there's certainly some who who would like to see the special permitting process remain for all ADUs as well as some of the other uses that we we talked about earlier. So the the new accessory dwelling unit provisions, it's aimed to be small in size, as I say, by right nine hundred or by special permit up to twelve hundred square feet. It's required to be owner occupied residences. And that these ADUs are part of the primary residence. They're not a standalone building added to the property. So it's a relatively small addition to a home. Obviously, depending on the size of the home that's currently there. They can't be held under separate ownership. And they have to be rented out for a minimum of of six months. So it's not designed for your your Airbnb type rentals. It's it's designed to be used as a as a residential unit on a longer term basis. And then the ADU provisions say that up to twenty of these permits would be issued annually in order to to make sure that we're not you know flooded with these requests. And these these details are spelled out in the in the warrant itself in the under the proposed language for the ADU. So those are the thirteen. Well, now now twelve will will renumber. We dropped number two, and then we'll obviously renumber the subsequent subsequent articles.
Okay, thank you. Sarah Melis, you have a comment?
Yes, as Chair of ZBA, we cannot support the ADU provision. What we're seeing is that people were spaces for family members. And they've been using the employee section of the the bylaw to allow family members to live there. We 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 think that by right is not appropriate. And we've had one application over the last five years under the ADU permit. The existing bylaw. And that was the only property that allowed a double lot. And we think it needs to be expanded. But we don't think that the current ADU proposition with all of the hoops to jump through makes sense. And we would rather have it be subject to a special permit.
So so is this you, so the board discussed these items and this is consensus of the board?
Yes.
Okay. Right.
You know, we spend enormous amount of time on applications and we had one application before us qualified under the current ADU. And we had ten property owners complaining. And it met crossed the Ts and dotted the Is, so we approved. And it was to Korean that they were not agreed to.
Okay. Chris, Chris Alney, who's on the meeting, he is one of the ones who's been working on this. Chris, do you have any comments?
So, yeah, I have a few comments. I want to point out to everybody that everyone in town right now by right can have four borders in their house without any kind of permits at all. You can just do it. So we're not, this is not a big stretch to say my mother in law needs a place to live. And I can accommodate her in my house. I'd like to give her a little kitchen. And nine hundred square feet, why can't you do that in this town? But we understand the the problems that people have with this. And so we're proposing to limit them to twenty per year, twenty ADUs. Any more than that, you have to go to the Board of Appeals and get a special permit. We don't expect to get twenty. We expect would be nice to get five or six maybe, but this is not we're not, what we're hoping to do is to provide some alternative housing opportunities in this town by right. So that owners can get some income that to help them pay their taxes and their utilities. And people who are looking for a reasonably affordable place to live can find a place to live. It won't cost so much. And we want to do this again in baby steps, so we don't, you know, do it all at once. We just want to take a little step forward.
And I would like to say that the planning board has done just I I cannot even begin to imagine the hours and hours and weeks and months you all have put into this. The planning board has really put so much into this. Thank you, Chris. Mary Foley?
Thank you, Becky. Let me lower my hand. Mary Foley, one Pulaski Drive. I'm also on the planning board and I do want to say I'm a dissent dissenting vote on this one. I I do not agree with the by right ADUs. I don't think our current bylaw is too onerous for for grandma to live in the house. The the unintended consequences with these types of situations requiring owner occupied for six months is that these become a lot of rentals. And it can be rentals to anybody and that's fine, but it's not always the case of, you know, aging in place or or the story that sounds good. So it it definitely wasn't a
Unanimous?
Unanimous, thank you for that. Unanimous vote, and I listened to Sarah Sarah Malish's concerns as well. And so, yeah, there there there's a lot of things that go into that that you know, and and we don't have a lot of data on what we currently have, thus not really knowing what we we need or should have. So, thank you.
Thank you. J C S T E?
Yes, hi, thank you. So not to be caught off guard. Public question for clarification. My name is Jeffrey Stewart, eight nineteen Summer Street.
Thank you.
Thank you. ADUs versus accessory dwelling units. Are they the same? Are we talking about the same thing?
Yes.
Okay, because my understanding that it's allowed by right right now with various restrictions on size. But I guess you do have to take before the what the ZBA, is that how that works? That they're asking us to keep if this question was there?
I'm not really sure what you're asking.
I'm asking whether the existing allowance for accessory units is being redefined under the proposed ADU insertion into the new bylaws. If they're the same thing, if that's what we're talking about here.
Mister Only, Chris, could you answer that, please?
Yes, so currently the zoning to counter Mary a little bit. To to get an ADU right now is by special permit. And your lot has to be twice the size as what's allowed in your zoning district. One acre zoned property, you need two acres to do this. And your house has to have been built before nineteen eighty four. So practically speaking, for this town, they are not allowed even by special permit. Because you only get them with special permit in those cases. Well, that's what we're trying to
Now I follow. Thank you.
Okay.
Our our lot doesn't have that problem, but many would certainly downtown. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is that all, Mr. Stewart? Okay.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And go ahead and lower your hand, please. Brian?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I currently sit on the ZBA as well. All right, and the the system, the system seems to work. I don't know why, but we're trying to fix something that's not broken. And if it passes the litmus test, it passes the test. So if there's a good project, if there's a good ADU, then it's gonna it's gonna pass. Now, the the concept of of by right is somewhat troubling that especially in a congested area around the heater and now we're also, we've got to concern ourselves with parking. And then we had that over in Lincoln Ave, I believe it was Lincoln Ave, where there were a lot of concerns about where these people are going to park. So I I'd like to just keep it the way it is. I think it's that there still needs some oversight. And if the system, if it works, it's going to work regardless of a special permit or by right.
Okay, thank you, Brian. And just to point out that that you do have to have parking, off road parking through the same curb cut for an ADU. So that's that, that's part of it. Mom's ex.
I'm sorry, Becky, that's Christine Delicio. It's just the way we name our phones within the family. Sorry about that. Christina Delicio, six Lincoln Ave. I just wanted to share one thing that actually came up in the news, and I think it's been on sixty minutes lately, and it's sweeping across Massachusetts. That real estate investment firms are sweeping and purchasing single family homes, and our our town is not exempt. And one thing, I just I'm not opposed to this. I'm not opposed to anything. I just don't feel like we've pursued all the unintended consequences that could happen. And one of them is our bylaw says this has to be owner occupied for six months. So if a corporation purchases a single family home, now what? Are we opening ourselves up to litigation? They can't put an ADU because they don't live there. It's a corporation. I just think there's a lot of things that we have not as a board, as a planning board. Betted a hundred percent. So that's my concern. I'm not opposed to everything. I just don't think we've explored all of the unintended consequences. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, we've gone through the, I'm sorry, Christina, do you have something else to say? Christina?
No.
Nope. Okay, go ahead and put your hand down, please. Thank you. I guess we've gone through the warrant now, and so we will have one fewer article. And we can I would take a motion to approve the special town warrant, town meeting warrant as amended. Unless there's any more discussion.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Ann Harrison?
Yes.
John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solace?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
And acting chair votes yes as well. Okay, there you go, Greg.
So, thank you, Becky, and everyone for their input and discussion. In terms of the board making making recommendations, I assume you'll take that up at your next meeting?
We can do that at do, we can either do that now or at the next meeting. I think, why don't we do that at the next meeting?
I would recommend, I would not recommend now, just give people a little more time to see the final versions that will be posted tomorrow. I can send you copies.
Thank you. Alan, would you like to hang around and enjoy the rest of it?
If you need me, but if not, I won't.
Well, we always need you.
Is there anything else that's pertinent to town meeting that you're going to take up?
No.
I I I think I'll I'll defer and and let you deal with it without me. So thank you very much.
We might find you over at Eli's house, so. Enjoy your evening. Thank you very much, Alan.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the proclamation for LGBTQ Day for approval. Has everyone had an opportunity? Oh, wait. Do you want us to come by and sign the warrant tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay. Now what? What is the latest that Sharon needs to have it signed?
So if we have it signed by a majority of you by by Thursday morning, we'll be fine.
Okay, well, we'll miss, we'll miss one signature.
Yes, understood.
All right. Thank you. All right. So I'm sorry, back to proclamation for LGBTQ Day. We have has everybody had an opportunity to read the proclamation? You can just nod your heads. Okay, wonderful. I will read it. And it says, whereas the month of June is lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer LGBTQ Pride Month, and whereas LGBTQ communities throughout New England are proud of the support and commitment, the North Shore Pride advocates for them. And whereas Manchester by the Sea welcomes all members of the LGBTQ community. And we celebrate each individual. And whereas the town of Manchester by the Sea would like to congratulate the members of the North Shore Pride for their commitment to reminding all of us that every individual deserves the respect and courtesy from others. Now, therefore, the Select Board officially proclaims June one, twenty twenty two North Shore Pride Day and recognizes June as LBGTQ Pride Month. May I have a motion to approve the proclamation?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, John. Moved by Ann, seconded by John. And roll call vote, Ann Harrison?
Yes.
John Round?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Brian Solace?
Yes.
And thank you. And Greg, we are having the flag raising ceremony. I believe that will be June first.
Correct, yes.
I'm sorry to say that I have to work that day, so I'm not able to attend and present the plot proclamation. Is anybody else from the board able to do?
I think it's at six o'clock at night.
Is it? Really? We're raising a flag at six at night? In the past, we've done it in the morning.
Yeah, I'll get confirmation of that. I'm not sure.
Okay, in that case, if we can get signatures, and I don't think we need this one done quickly, so I think that will allow Kathy to get by to sign as well. And then once we find out when the actual flag raising ceremony is, we can go from there. Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the Victualers a license for beach canteen Bravo by the sea. Do we have someone from Bravo here?
Probably not.
Okay, I did have a few questions about the license. It it's is the is the canteen down at the beach? That's actually the address is forty down there. Is that correct? Or is that?
No, that's their, that's their.
Location.
Yeah, yes.
Because I didn't see, and it's probably there, and I probably just missed it, but I didn't see where it actually stated this, that this was for the um, canteen, the beach canteen.
No, I think, I don't think she included all the pages.
Okay, because it usually there's either the social security number, the Fed ID number, and that's not on there either.
Right, right. Those are the additional pages.
Okay, but you saw those, Greg?
Yeah, I'll confirm that they're all filled out.
Okay, so the question is, did anybody else have any other comments on that? Yes, no, maybe so.
When do they need this permit?
Uh, yeah, they're they're hoping to start um, this coming weekend.
Um, I, I am comfortable signing off on this, Greg, if if you can um, confirm and get back to all of us. That it is actually.
You could have a vote that's contingent on on the completed paperwork.
Um, and and you would verify that? Or do you want me to do something?
No, I'll I'll work with Sharon tomorrow to to make sure that that's correct.
Okay, um, how does everybody feel about that?
I'm finding it for a couple of years now.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, Becky. They've been there before.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you, Kathy. Um, motion to approve the Victualer, Common Victualer License for Beach Canteen Bravo by the Sea. Um, once Greg.
Is there, is there a comment that from a J C S T?
Stuart? We usually don't take comments on.
I apologize for Jeff Stewart here, 18th Summer. Is this at St. Beach or is this downtown next to the Dunkin' Donuts?
King Beach. That's the beach canteen.
I understand. I just don't understand why I completely missed that we might have alcohol at the beach for.
There's no alcohol down there. It's a canteen. They're not serving alcohol. It's just food.
Oh, it's a continuation of their service which they've been providing.
Just food.
Thank you. I knew it was a stupid question.
No, no, it's not a stupid question. I mean, how would you know?
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so um.
Move to approve the common Victualer's license for the beach street can't be beach can't be or Bravo by the sea, subject to um Greg's verifying that the complete paperwork is available in Town Hall.
And I'll second, and I'll second, that's very complete, Ann, yes.
Thank you. Moved by Ann expertly as usual, seconded by John. Roll call vote, Ann Harrison?
Yes.
John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solace?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Acting Chair votes yes. Okay, wonderful. Uh, consent agenda. Um, we're pulling out the ice cream fundraiser for the ninth grade class. Is that correct, Greg?
Yeah, they're they're pursuing alternative plans.
Um, and regarding the minutes, I believe the only people who are able to vote on these minutes are Ann and John. I was not there. Kathy and Brian were not on the board at that time.
I think you were right. Is the minutes to May 2nd, correct?
Yes.
Well, before we move forward on that, um, does anybody, if we could do the rest of the content consent agenda in its entirety, does anybody have questions on any of the remaining agenda items?
I move reapprove the consent agenda, um, with the exception of the approval of the ice cream fundraiser and the approval of minutes.
I'll second that, uh, just a question, Ann. So really, um, down the road, those minutes, uh, really, it's just, it's the Becky, you were not there on on May 2nd?
No, you two can amend, you, you two can vote those on your today.
Okay.
But we just, the rest of us cannot vote on those.
Right, right. But the, but but we're the only two that can vote at any time on those.
Correct.
Right.
So my question to you, Ann, you you need more time to review?
Um, I just wanted to be clear that that, let's, let's if you don't mind, I'd like to, um.
There's a motion on the table.
Hey, I'd I'd like to stand with my motion, and we can take up the minutes as a separate item.
Perfect.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, Ann?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Acting Chair votes yes as well. Moved by Ann, seconded by John. Now for the minutes.
Uh, I move to approve the minutes of May 2nd.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, all in favor? Ann?
Hi.
John?
Yes.
There you go, done deal. Town administrators report.
Uh, sure, I'll be brief. Um, so tomorrow night, uh, the Chewbacca Road Project is reconfigured uh, is before the Hamilton Conservation Commission. Um, as you recall, there was some discussion about revisiting the relocated, uh, pursuing the relocated road. Um, Hamilton is up against a deadline to spend their bond money. So so while at first they were willing to entertain the possibility of revisiting that, uh, they feel that they they've lost the opportunity to do that in terms of the timing. So they are proceeding with plans to um pave the existing gravel portion of the road that they would um reconfigure it somewhat by having it slope away from gravelly pond and construct stormwater swells um, and it catch basins to filter out sediment. And then that, those catch basins would um discharge into somewhat areas before those wetlands then eventually uh drain into the, into gravelly pond. Um, so from a, from a water quality perspective, I think we um, we can feel good that the, that the change is is an improvement to water quality. Um, the Hamilton Concom will be reviewing the project tomorrow night and and no doubt, um, you know, impose various conditions to make sure that the various wetland rules and regs um, are being followed and adhered to. Um, I know that our, our Conservation Commission uh has sent a letter to the uh, to their counterpart in Hamilton, um, just highlighting a few areas of of concern to make sure that that Hamilton is is paying attention to the various rules and regulations. I'm sure they are. As a friendly reminder from our, our Conservation Commission to do so. So that's the status of that. Just wanted people to have that update. Um, and notice of that hearing was was sent to both the Concom and to uh uh, into, into the segment office. So we did get a proper notification of that, of that hearing. Uh, moving on, if I can, uh, just looking ahead at that uh, schedules, I think it'd be helpful um, just to review. So our next meeting will be, will be June 6th. Um, obviously, the special town meeting then is the following Saturday on June 11th. Uh, the new state holiday, Juneteenth, um, it's June 19th is the holiday, but because it's a Sunday, it'll be celebrated on the Monday, which would be your, your next regular meeting after the 6th. Um, so I'm assuming that we will meet um, on the 21st, June 21st. And then moving into July, similar issue, um, July 4th is a Monday, um, so that's the holiday. Um, so I'm assuming that we'll be meeting on the 5th of July for your regular meeting in 1st of July. And it's um, it's really not too soon to be thinking about when you would like to hold um the annual Select Board uh, sort of workshop session or retreat where we talk about how the past year has gone, what process improvements you might want to uh, want to make, and what, what your priorities are um, for the, for the coming months ahead. And um dare I say, as we start to think about the FY24 budget, which gets underway in in the fall, but it's always good to have some early um, priorities out there so that we can prepare for those priorities um, as we gear up for for yet another budget cycle, even though the budget cycle we just finished hasn't even begun yet in terms of implementing it, uh, July 1st is the start of the fiscal year. So just want to put those dates out there and have you think about your calendars and and we can look at, at your next meeting, we can take a further look ahead into July and August. And then my last item is um, uh, a request that we have from the um, Manchester Boat Club. And they would like to install an oyster upweller station at Morse Pier. And this is both an educational uh setup to uh have people learn more about the the value of the by valves in the water. They they do a lot of filtering. That's, it's pretty amazing, the amount of water that clams and oysters and and other by valves uh provide. There is a long-term goal of reestablishing some oyster beds in uh, at the mouth of the harbor. Um, that work is is been underway for the last couple of years. There's a process of getting it approved by the state. A lot of testing that has to take place and year over year, um, trends that have to be analyzed in terms of water quality and and the appropriateness of the uh, of the ocean floor bed to uh, to host the uh, the oysters. So uh, uh, Kerry Visner is requesting permission uh, to put a upweller tank. Basically, it's a uh, you know, three foot by six or seven foot long plywood box, basically with fiberglass insert to hold um, and to hold the young oysters. And uh, they they grow there and then they get transferred out to, out to the water. Um, the Harbor Advisory Committee and and Bion are very supportive of this, uh, as well as the Concom. And um, it is a bit time sensitive. That's why I I'm bringing this up to you now. They, they um they need to get it set up to take advantage of of the water temperatures that is currently there. Uh, you can't grow these, these infant oysters um, in too warm water. Um, so they they are a bit under the gun for timing. So if you're comfortable, um, I would give them the okay to proceed.
Any questions from the board?
I uncomfortable taking a position on something that wasn't announced. But we could say that we won't interfere with your ability to approve it.
Yeah, and we can, we can have you formally approve it at your next meeting if that would be a greater comfort.
I do have a few questions. Um, and these are, I've seen these. There's one, if you want to go up to Maritime Gloucester.
Yes.
It's on the loop there. There's one there. You can see what it looks like. Um, is this, do they do this year round, Greg, or is it seasonal?
I believe it's, believe it's seasonal.
Okay, um, is there any noise from the sump? Where or the, the, I'm, I'm just curious about that for people who are down there. Of course, we do have lobster boats down there, I understand, but.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's a, you know, those sump pumps make a little bit of noise. I probably my hearing wouldn't hear it, but.
Mine wouldn't either.
So, uh, I I don't think it would be very noticeable or bother so.
I I'm very comfortable with this if Concom, Harbor, and and Bion are for it. I, I, I have heard a lot of good things about uh, the up dweller, upweller, up dweller, there's maybe two, but um, upweller use. Um, and you would like to wait to vote on this to another meeting till it's posted? No, I agree. I think that I'm, but but how time sensitive is it, Greg?
Well.
Right, so they're, they're needing to move forward, but if they were assured of a, of a yes vote at a future date, I think they, that they could move forward.
Ann?
Let's certainly not vote on it, but let's, okay.
Yeah, what I'm hearing is, I'm not hearing negatives, but you'd like a formal vote, and we formally vote on things when it's formally posted on the agenda. I think that's, that's fair.
Stuffy old lady.
No, no, it it gives people the opportunity to weigh in, which is, you know, and I I agree with you. Okay.
I have just one question. Is there any liability to the town? So it's uh, it's certainly covered under our general liability. This is a, this is, we already have liability coverage for the pier. Okay. Well, so it it would come under that, that general liability that we currently have.
All right, so we can put that on next next meeting agenda 66. Um, and are you all set, Greg?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, before we take a motion to adjourn, I did have just a couple more comments that I wanted to make. It seemed prudent to wait until the next meeting for the reorganization, so we're all on one continent. And I'm also hoping that we can do it hybrid. If we can get a lesson in or so. Uh, does that seem possible, Greg?
Yes, I think it should be.
Okay.
So Becky, I I, so I should say I I have a um, an issue. I hope I can make the next meeting. I'm not sure. I am in Alaska.
Ooh.
So we'll just have to see how that goes. But I've known, I've known that for many months, of course, but of course, many months ago, we didn't know how anything was fitting together here.
That is very true.
We'll, we'll see.
Okay.
So just be aware of that.
All right, need a valet?
When, when does Kathy return?
Friday.
Yep, I'll be back Friday.
Okay. I hope you're having a wonderful time. Sorry to keep you up all night.
Um, it's okay.
The I was at the training session that we had some months ago. And I I I hope things have been, it seemed as if we needed an extra person who was not on the board. Um, and at least two computers to run a hybrid meeting. In addition to the large screen, which is also a computer. And um, it just I want to be sure that we have a training session that is successful and that we all participate in it. Because we need not only to have us sitting there, we have to have some of us outside trying to dial in um, or somebody else dialing in so that we we get a feeling for how the whole thing works. Um, I really don't want to have the June 6th meeting be something that we have to cancel because the technology doesn't work. It's an important meeting.
Yep.
As our, as our, all of ours, of course.
Always.
Okay, I know, Becky, your schedule is busy. So why don't you pick a time after Friday, when you can be there? And and maybe we should pick a time right now.
Well, that's a good idea, because there aren't a lot of days between now and the meeting. Let's see, next week. Oh, wait a minute, Memorial Day Parade. Is there going to be a parade on Memorial Day? Sorry, that's my ADD at work. We'll come back to that. Okay, um. I Monday is Memorial Day. On Tuesday or Thursday. Greg, would it?
So Thurs- Thursday is your normal day off, right, Becky? So that.
Now it, yeah, well, it's a moving target.
Okay.
Yes, Tuesdays and Thursdays.
So I would, I would target Thursday.
Okay, that's the 30th. Would anybody else be able to make a, a, a Thursday training?
No.
I'm confused. I I thought Thursday would be June 2nd.
Yeah, it's just a.
What day? No.
You're looking at the wrong count. You're looking at the wrong count, wrong month, maybe.
I am, thank you, yes. Sorry about that. No wonder all the fur brows. Okay, no, I'm afraid I'm, I'm the only day I am not working this week, and would have time, would be Friday afternoon.
Friday the 3rd.
27th. This Friday.
This week.
This Friday.
But Kathy?
Or I could do, never mind, ignore me, bringing it back. Thursday, June 2nd. How's that sound? Muffin has her hand up.
Yeah, so I just wanted to let you guys know that Parks and Rec had a meeting last night on the Pine Street Field Project, and we used the hybrid format.
Yeah.
And it worked really well, I could not be there in person, so I was the one that signed on. Everyone else was there, so Cheryl Marshall can be a great resource for you. Because there were a couple little kinks in the very beginning, but they got them figured out really quickly, so I just want to let you guys know that we did do it, we did use the process last night, and it did work well.
Excellent, Muffin, great, glad to hear that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Brian, is Becky taking Gracie out?
Yeah, definitely.
There you go.
I just wonder, I actually called, I was in Utah last night, and I actually was able to call in on that meeting, the Parks and Rec, and it worked out real well, I saw, I was, I was quite happy.
Good. Okay, so Thursday, June 2nd?
That's not good for me, Becky, but, well, I can ad lib some other time, I'm gone that day, that's the day I leave.
You're sneaking away.
What about the Tuesday, Becky, did you say you could do the Tuesday?
Tuesday, the 31st, you mean? I could do that. John?
Yep.
Brian? Ann?
Yeah, I just was curious, did Parks and Recs use Room 5 or Room 7?
Uh, Room 5, Ann.
Thanks.
Perfect. Greg, do you think we might be able to?
We should, we should be able to, I can, I can confirm that tomorrow.
Okay, I, at this point, I have no time constraints there, so if anybody else does, would it be easier if we just sent you an email, Greg, each of us, or a group one with different time constraints, if anybody has one? Any, some?
I have no time constraints that day.
Neither do I.
Okay.
I would, I would prefer the afternoon, but I can probably work with whatever.
Okay.
Ryan?
I'll make my schedule work.
Okay, perfect, okay, so pencil in Tuesday for that. Good, it'd be nice to meet in person. And lastly, I just wanted to point out that, has everybody had a chance to look at the MMA Select Board Handbook? Not that you've read it, but, but had it, you have been able to get ahold of it? Okay, anyway, wealth of information, as is the MMA. Send out a one or two emails. And I guess that's that.
Did you want to say something about the Memorial Day Parade?
Yeah, thank you, Ann, there we go, yes, Memorial Day, there is a parade, is it the usual?
The usual, yes. So, you know, gathering at the, the parking lot behind Town Hall, they'll do a little ceremony there with the, with the wreath and the, and the boat. Excuse me. And, and then they'll march the loop to the different stations at the center.
And it starts at?
9 o'clock, I believe.
So Kathy and, I'm sorry, Ann, go ahead. I was just gonna say Kathy and Brian, typically, the Board of Selectmen meet down there, down at Veterans Post, Emerald Bailey, no, not, yeah.
Athlete.
Jim. It's been a long day. At the Legion, wear comfy shoes, and we go to the the main cemeteries, right, we don't go to 1661. We haven't stopped before.
Yeah, I, I do have a, an email from Bruce, I thought I said it to you all, but I'll, I'll make sure it gets sent out again.
You may have, and I may have missed it, as, as evident by how I'm doing right now. Okay, wonderful. If you could send that out again, that would be great. Thank you, Kathy and Brian, not a bad intro, I hope.
Thank you.
Unless anybody else has something to say, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Excellent. Okay, roll call vote, John Round?
Yes.
Kathy Bellotta?
Yes.
Brian Solacy?
Yes.
Ann Harrison?
Yes.
Acting Chair says yes as well. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you, Becky.
Good night.
Bye, Greg. Good job.